To call this meeting in order, please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First item on the agenda is with action is public input. There's a few individuals who have themselves listed for the animal ordinance. I'm gonna have you wait and speak at the ordinance and you'll be right after the presentation from the sponsoring counselor. And then I'll have Briann speak at reports on 911. So the first person under public input is Vivian Flores, Labor Day Music Festival. And I'll remind you that you have five minutes. I'll keep track of it and give you a little note when you have about a minute left.
Good evening. My name is Vivian Flores. I'm the Vice President of the Southwest Chicano Music Association. Thank you. And I'm here just to let you guys know, I thought we had to be on the agenda, but to let you know that we have our festival scheduled for September 4th through the 6th at Golf Park. Our kickoff dance is going to be on Friday at The Flame with Darren Cordovan, his group. It's gonna be an outstanding concert to attend to. Also, this is Rosemary. She's the President of the Southwest Chicano Music Association. We appreciate you letting us come forward and let you all know about our festival. We will be coming up with Anthony from Q's Bistro when he comes up for the Agenda for the Liquor License. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Eric Lynch on the automatic water meter readers.
Hi, I'm Eric Lynch. I'm a citizen here in Silver City. It's been brought to my attention that the city is considering installing some automatic meter readers. I'm not sure if these are the smart grid meters or if these are just the automatic readers, so I'm assuming it's AMRs that are just the automatic readers, which have lesser health effects. But the International Institute of Building Biology and Ecology has charted out the threshold levels of harmful health effects by these meters. They have shown that at 10 feet away, this radiation is considered extreme, and at 25 feet away, it's considered strong. These standards were set up for sleeping quarters and quarters that are where people spend a lot of time. The World Health Organization has issued concerns with these meters that particularly accumulative effects after five to 10 years, they seem to be carcinogenic. The smart grid meters have been banned in over 50 municipalities in California. These particular meters, the just the automatic readers, are slightly less on the radar of the public eye. So I would hope that you would consider that information when considering installing these. They have particularly harmful environmental health effects and also I'll try and track what model we're considering installing that might help me get you more information. Thank you.
Thank you. And when we get to public reports, we may have you just update us on what we're doing. Next is Lucy Whitmarsh, Main Street.
Good evening, I'm Lucy Whitmarsh and I'm the Executive Director of the Silver City Main Street. And we have our program is housed at the Visitor Center, which is also part of the Big Ditch Park. And I wanted to just let you know about an absolutely wonderful event that happened today. They installed an official scenic historic marker in honor of Anita Scott Coleman, who lived from 1890 to 1960. And she grew up on a ranch south of town that is now part of Scott Park, which is recognized as that. And we're very honored to have this historic marker in our community and especially honored to have it at the Visitor Center. While they were doing the installation today, I was able to get, excuse me, as I was standing out in the rain, I was able to get some photographs. And I did get that posted on our Main Street website page, so if you, or not the website page, on the Facebook page. And eventually I'll be able to get it with a longer, a little bit longer explanation and story and additional photographs on the Main Street website page. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And we also have Alicia Drew, also on the automatic water meter.
Hello, my name is Alicia Drew. I have a weird genetic condition, a mutation of my HLA gene, and I cannot process megahertz range radiation or pulsed wireless radiation. And I had a stroke and thermal shock from electricity smart meters in 2011. And that's why I'm in New Mexico. I actually can't travel to Santa Fe or Las Cruces or Albuquerque because of water smart meters. The AMR meters, I know, are not as bad because they're not communicating with each other, but they're still an extreme environmental hazard. And an opt-out won't really suffice. And I don't see why the town can't replace them with, replace the decaying meter system that we currently have for water metering with something analog that we already know doesn't have harmful effects. And I have, I seem to know more than anyone else in the town council right now about these meters. And the person, the head of this project at YESCO is telling me to just wait until the town council makes a decision. But the public has a legal right to know exactly what these meters do and how they work, what make and model they are, long before a decision is made. And also, I would like to reiterate that wireless radio frequency radiation was classified in 2012 by the World Health Organization as a Class 2B carcinogen. And a single electricity or gas smart meter, the ones that communicate, is equivalent to 100 cell phones constantly pulsing. And when those pulses occur, they pulse thousands of times in a second, which is the same rate at which intercellular communication occurs. And this disrupts basic biological processes, causing strokes, seizures, and tumors, among a host of other illnesses. So this might only be something like a tenth that bad, but it's still bad enough. And there are a lot of environmentally ill people in this town. They just happen to be because it's just better in a desert environment for a lot of people. So I'm kind of speaking for them as well. Thank you very much for listening.
Next on the agenda is council comments. Counselor Beckson?
No comment, thank you, Mayor.
Counselor Amensmith?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a couple of comments. First, I want to publicly acknowledge that I did a bad editing job on the independent article that Tim Mathis passed by me before he published it. Most of the article I'm really happy about, but one section I want to do a correction on. Tim and I have been talking a lot about what concerns I had about the town. And I had said that, oh gosh, I'm pretty concerned about hold harmless, but we've heard a lot about that. And I said, you know, I'm concerned about loss of revenue and loss of resources. And then I said, you know, grocery receipts, tax are down, tourism dollars are down. I'm afraid people aren't moving here and I'm afraid that volunteer is gonna be burnt out. And when he passed that by me, I didn't make sure that everything that I said is in there. So I just want to say it publicly. That's the things I'm thinking about, is loss of revenues and loss of resources to the town, both energetic people and money coming in. So I apologize. Second thing I want to say is I went to a picnic last night in celebration of pickleball. And I first heard about pickleball about six months ago. And at that time, there were about 40 pickleball players in town. And now they're over 100. So I understand it's an enormous growing sport. So I just want to thank the town staff for being responsive and giving pickleball courts again. Thank you.
Counselor Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to make a statement here on the last town council meeting that we had here. There was an article in the Daily Press that said that we were in a very heated discussion. I don't think it was a heated discussion, I don't think so. It was a discussion that needed to be said and it was well done. In my opinion, I didn't like the language of the Daily Press. I think that they should be a little bit more outgoing and saying things like that. To me, it makes us look like we were against one another. We're not. We've been a council and this council has been very good. Sure, we discuss things. And we have to discuss things in front of the public. Another thing is that on Cooper Street, there's been a lot of, lot of traffic. And I've had some people call about cop cars going too fast. I did talk to Sheriff Raoul today. And he said that he was gonna take care of the situation. There's been a lot of traffic through there. Bear with us. There's, I think there's more traffic going through Cooper Street than through the highway. And it's noisy. It's very noisy and it's noisy all night long. Please bear with us. There's also another article in the Daily Press, which I think we should do, we should follow up. And that is, this person wrote that if there is a diversion, that there's gonna be a diversion for the water, why not let the people vote for it? I think that's a good idea. Let the people vote for it. They're playing with our money, with everybody's money here. And I'm against it, as we well said here in the last town council meeting, that we were against it. Let the people decide. That's what it's all about. We're elected. You guys have the right to say yea or nay on that. I would like to see more articles also, and things done in Grant County. Not just in Silver City, but in Grant County. Here is Silver City Life. It's a good, it's a good book. But I think that we should have more people, especially veterans. Interview veterans, interview the elderly people. They have a lot more to tell than us young people do. They have already put in their training. We haven't. We're getting there, but we haven't. There was an article in the Daily Press concerning the gospel mission that we had, the bike run for a gospel mission. It was very disappointing. I'm not bashing the Daily Press. I'm just asking why can they not do certain things so that everybody has a window of what's going on? This gospel mission, it turned out to be very well. Everything that was made, all the food that was made, the money that was made, was all given to Randy Sayers. And the cookout was extremely good. It was very, very good. And we need more people to do this. We need more volunteer people to do this, things like that. Hunger is a very big issue here in Grant County. Not, not just through Grant County, but all over the place. And there's a lot of homeless people here. We have to help them out. I don't think anyone would like to go hungry or sleep without a roof on their head. So... Getting back to an article on yesterday's, on last night's paper also. I liked the article that Lee wrote as he is working with Anthony Cantona for the Clay Festival. Why not? It's only gonna be a good thing. We can have things downtown, we can have things in the middle of town, we can have things uptown. Let's be supportive of everything that we do. We're up here to help the people. I think we've done a good job on it. Sometimes things don't go like we planned, but that's, that's life. So with that, I leave you. Thank you.
Counselor Kano?
Mayor. The first thing is, I just want to announce that the second great conversation on homelessness is going to be held this Thursday at 6:00 PM at the Volunteer Center. It's really important for all community members to come and get involved in, in the discussion. The last time, because of some scheduling issues and some late notices, I was the only elected official there. So I'm hoping that some others will make it this time and we can have a really good conversation and decide where the, the group wants to, how the group wants to proceed with some of the ideas that have been presented to work on this problem. Also, I've been getting a lot of phone calls asking if, for several different things about public works. If you can, if the Public Works Department can change their schedule for when they, they spray for weeds or when they pick up trash or, I mean, all of these things. And I just want the public to be aware that the Public Works Department works very, very hard and they have to stay on schedule so that they can get everything done that needs to get done. And I was speaking with Director Benya and he mentioned to me that he's working with the same amount of staff that he was working with 15 years ago. So it's a very small staff, they work very hard, so, you know, come a break. If they have to go spray for weeds in your neighborhood, it's gonna have to happen eventually. So, you know, just let them do it. Please. And then the last thing is, I serve on the cemetery board and I serve with, well, served because she's now retired or will be in a couple of days, with a woman named Linda Nunez, who has worked in City Hall for several decades now. And I just want to wish her a happy retirement and thank her for what she's done for Silver City.
I have no comment. Does anybody have any, need a second round? We'll move on to approve the minutes. Counselor Amensmith?
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the Town Council of July 14th, 2015.
Counselor Madison?
Mr. Mayor, a second. The motion is stated.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the Town Council of Silver City on July 14th, 2015. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is under reports, staff reports. Briann with dispatch, if you'd like.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Briann Dallos. I'm the Director of Grant County Regional Dispatch, better known as Central Dispatch. I was asked to give a little talk about non-emergency calls in 911 and when to call, when to use, appropriate time to use 911. There seems to be a lot of questions about it. So a time to choose to call 911 is an in-progress emergency. A medical emergency like a heart attack, stroke, anaphylactic shock, anybody that's having a severe illness that's, needs to get to the hospital immediately, or a crime that's actually in progress, a robbery, battery that's occurring at the moment, something that's in progress. A lot of our community doesn't understand that 911 is not 411. We get a lot of community members calling to ask us what the non-emergency number is. Our non-emergency number is published in the phone book. You can find it on Google. But it's 911, 911 is abused a lot. And I just want to remind everybody that when you do call 911, you might be holding, and it's for a non-emergency reason, you might be holding somebody who needs to get through to 911 and you could cause a life or something like that because we do have some dispatchers who have to stay on the line with some people because of their, they think their issue is an emergency. We also do give the non-emergency those people when they do call in. So I highly suggest you guys use 388-8840 for non-emergency. But I do want to give some stats also. So from our fiscal year, which is July 2014 through June 2015, we had 3,341 landline 911s come in. We had 12,676 911 wireless calls. And our non-emergency was 80,707. So I just want to remind everybody, our center is manned with only two dispatchers on at a time. So it is, sometimes you guys might be put on hold right away because we have 10 calls coming in. Or they're trying to handle a medical emergency and we do medical dispatching. So they are triaging a call to give to EMS. So patients on the non-emergency calls. And I know lately, and also just to go with that, we also have to deal with dispatching all those calls that come in. So those two dispatchers are not only answering your phone calls, but still have to give them out to police. With that being said, we handled, with, from January to today, we have already dispatched or handled traffic-wise 47,496 municipality police calls or the Grant County Sheriff's Office. So just remember, that's a lot of work for two people to handle at one time. But I know there's a big issue that's been brought up in several meetings I've attended on Code Red. So, and I want to encourage the community to sign up. I have a couple dispatchers that are more than willing to set some time aside. If you call into Central Dispatch and we'll get you signed up. But the link to sign up is on the town website, it's on the county website, all the press websites. But I want to give you a total. It's really low. So it's, we only have 1,514 homes registered for Code Red. And Code Red is used whenever we have a high emergency and we need to warn the public, whenever for evacuations or if there's a severe emergency to get out to a lot of people at one time. So I really want to encourage, and we also only have 19 businesses registered in the whole county. Only 19 businesses. So I know that everyone calls, complains to police departments, the sheriff's office, to myself also, that they never received Code Red alerts or this and that. But I also want to say, after the jail escape, I did have people call in and ask how to be removed from it. So you only receive them if it pertains to your area. And, but I really encourage a lot of people to sign up. So it is a tool that our community has paid for to be used and we would like to use it for the right purposes. Anybody have any questions?
I have a couple of questions and just for clarification, probably to highlight some of these issues. How many signups do we have on Code Red, approximately?
That's the 15, 14.
So that's phone numbers that are actually...
Right, that's actual residents.
Or actual residents, individuals?
Right, I'm sorry. There's only 1,268 residents. But you can sign up multiple numbers under each household. So we have a total of 1,514 phone numbers registered. So there's only 12,68 residents in the whole county, signed up.
Also, you're talking about having, not only did you illustrate a tremendous number of calls coming in and a tremendous amount of dispatches that you had to go. How many entities are you trying to dispatch that you have to figure out? Who, who are, who do we need to contact? Which police agency, which emergency services? How many entities are you, or agencies are you serving?
We have four police municipalities, Silver City, Hurley, Bear, and Santa Clara. And we do the Grant County Sheriff's Office and State Police. We also dispatch the police anytime they cannot communicate with their radio, which is in Las Cruces, and that is frequent. So they're, we consider them as a law enforcement we dispatch for. And then we have 12 volunteer fire departments, one paid volunteer, I mean, one paid fire department. We have Gila Regional EMS and Gila Valley EMS that we also dispatch for. But we also have small agencies like Forest Service, Game and Fish, that we still dispatch for. They come on duty with us. And anytime we have a call for them locally, we give it to them instead of calling their dispatch. So we have a lot of small calls like that. We dispatch for Western PD also for after hours. Or we get 911 for them. So then we have to turn around, call their dispatch to get those called out. But we can dispatch them radio-wise as well.
Okay. Is there any other questions? Counselor Madison?
Thank you, Mayor. Just as a point of clarification, I usually get folks that will call me home and say, "I called the police." And I said, "Well, no, you called Central Dispatch. They're not the police." And I think it's really, I mean, what you've done is you've really displayed and, you know, told us exactly what it is you're doing. So I just want folks to remember that they're not talking to an officer. They're talking to a dispatcher. And, and so to take that into consideration, that that may be that when you do the triage and you do what any, you're doing with the phone system with 911s, what folks, what the doctors do at the ER and nurses do, you're triaging so that the barking dog complaint will be lower if there's domestic violence, traffic accidents, other emergencies that have to be attended to. And it's just, you know, sooner or later, folks will get around to you. And then if you haven't heard, if no one's come by, then call the non-emergency number again about the barking dog and remind them that you still haven't seen an officer. And when the one's available, you know, please ask them to, to still stop by because the animal is still barking. So I just wanted to clarify that when they call you, they're not calling an actual police person or a fire person. They're, they're talking to dispatch.
Right, exactly. And it does take a while sometimes for police to respond when they do have high priority calls. Yes.
Yeah, and that's just all based on the fact that we also have a certain number of officers on duty at any given time.
Correct, yes.
So thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Counselor Amensmith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much for coming and reporting. I really appreciate that. I had a number of constituents say that they signed, thought they signed up for Code Red a few years ago and then have not been getting calls. Should I encourage them to sign up again? Was there a possibility that things somehow got truncated or...
Yeah, they can go in and look at their account to see if it's still active or whatnot.
Okay.
Yeah, and if not, if they have an issue, I'm more than welcome to help them look through, look at it if they need. If they need.
Thank you so much for your offer of help.
You're welcome.
Counselor Ray?
Thank you for coming. It was very enjoyable and I'm sure people need to hear this. Thank you.
And I'd just like to remind people that the dispatch number, the non-emergency number is 388-8840. And I would encourage everybody to put that as one of their contacts. In both my phones, it's actually listed as a contact. It's not a bad thing. You hope that you never have to use it, but it's always nice to have it there handy and it is superior to using 911 in a non-emergency situation. I appreciate your information. Thank you. Mr. Brown, do you have anything? And if you, and if you wouldn't mind touching base a little bit on the, on the automatic meters that we've been looking at and where we're at on that after the chief...
Mayor of City Council, I was asked to do a short report on, apparently there's a perception that there's an increase in traffic enforcement in Silver City during the summertime. That's true. We receive funding from Safer New Mexico, which is several different types of grants that we use to do enforcement, which target specific violations. Some of those violations are seatbelt violations. We do DWI enforcement through those grants. We also have a county DWI grant that we receive that we also utilize funding from that to do driving hall under the influence enforcement. We also have selective traffic enforcement programs that we use to target specific areas of town. I believe I had a conversation with an individual a couple of weeks back that they saw a lot of officers and a lot of traffic stops on 180, yes. We were enforcing not only the distracted driving through that grant... Uh, we were enforcing not only the distracted driving through that grant, but we're also enforcing speeding violations. So these are all grant-funded operations. Uh, as for the number of citations that are being issued right now, um, during last month, I think it was five hundred, about five fifty. So we probably cut in half the number of citations that we're issuing over last year for this first period of six months. Uh, it's reduced significantly. However, through these programs, we target the most severe issues, uh, that we see in our jurisdiction. Not only do we receive that grant funding, but all other agencies, if they apply for in the state of New Mexico, receive that funding as well. Any questions?
Councilor Madison?
Thank you, Mayor. Is, um, the grant funding part of, you said Safer in New Mexico? Is it also part of the hundred days and nights of summer, um, that's across the state to, um, do the, you mentioned seatbelt DWI, um, as well as, um, distracted driving, which are otherwise known as texting?
Yes.
Yes. And I know that you've been doing that, and I just, um, I know that's a hard, it's one of the hardest ones to enforce, and I'm pleased that, uh, the department has been looking at that because there's been increasing number of complaints about people texting as they're driving and you can, you may be riding behind someone and see them going, you know, and not looking up. So, thank you. Thank you for that explanation, too.
Absolutely. And also because of the conversation or presentation that the city council brought forth last, uh, meeting, uh, we've stepped up operations in the area of Bullard Street, um, Broadway Street, and also Cooper Street. So we've made a lot of, uh, adjustments. And one of the adjustments is four to six hours a day officers are in the downtown area doing enforcement as well.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Chief.
Mr. Brown? Mayor of Council, um, as you know, we've been working on, on the radio read water meter system for, for quite a while. We did extensive research on different types of meters. Uh, the, the type of, uh, type of meter, we actually went and visited different communities and looked at different systems. Uh, we're looking to start the purchasing of the meters in late August and start the replacement in, at the beginning of next calendar year. Um, there, there has been some done, some work done on the research of the, the, uh, the radio read, the, the actual system itself is how it might work from the information that we get, which was the first information we started looking at, of course. And then we started realizing that there could be some, uh, physical effects that could be caused, uh, from the, the radio read. Um, I do have some white papers and I had, do have two studies that were done, one in California, one in Texas, on the meter system, that we did finally choose the Metron system. Uh, basically what happens, it, the, the system sends out a pulse every seven minutes. Um, it's a non-ionizing pulse, it's a, it's a lower than, than what you get from a cell phone. Um, and it sends out that pulse for a nanosecond, once every seven minutes. So each day you get less than a quarter of a second worth of, of burst from that, not even burst, but, uh, uh, signal from that, that, that meter. And base, and then from that point, we drive around once a month and the radio read drive-by system, uh, will come by as they, they're sending out the burst, and it'll, it'll catch that burst and gather that information. And it's unlike the, the Verizon signal system that, uh, they have that, uh, they gather information every day. We'll be gathering it once a month, uh, but we'll be gathering ninety days' worth of information once a month. Uh, so that'll help us in the conservation process, on, on showing, uh, customers, um, what their usage, what's been happening over the last ninety days. But it's a very minimal impact to get a lot of information. Uh, so that's what we've been working on. And, and I do have the information, if anybody, uh, requests it, just, uh, call my office, get me an email, uh, call my secretary at five three four six three five eight, and we'll get them the information.
And my information, like the make model, what, what, the specifics of what we're looking at?
The models, everything on the meters, from the meters down to the studies that, that we use to, in the selection process.
What's your number again?
My secretary's number is five three four six three five eight.
Perfect. Any questions for Alex? Thank you, Alex. Any other staff reports?
Um, I do want to report on, uh, we, we did do some, some of our own weed cutting on city property this, we've been doing it throughout the summer. Uh, but, um, apparently we, we went by and we, we bulldozed a property that, that, uh, some people considered to be a wetland. Uh, it was just a bunch of tall weeds created from the monsoon season. But, uh, we plan on, in this neighborhood off of F Street, to, um, try to reseed with some net, some native grasses and stuff like that, to help cover the, um, the erosion that may occur because of the way that, uh, the staff addressed the, the property. And, and it was done because, you know, especially this time of year, just like Councilor Kano said, uh, we don't have a lot of staff and they're trying to cover a lot of property. And, um, you know, their first, uh, first reaction was, it was easier to get that big piece of property with the loader and take all the weeds up rather than go out there with the weed eater for many hours. So, um, we will, we will address that and we'll, we'll take care of it.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, moving on to new business. First item under new business is approval disapproval of two public celebration permit applications for the Western New Mexico University Bash on Broadway event to be held on August fifteenth, two thousand and fifteen, from five PM to nine PM at two hundred North Bullard Street, Silver City, New Mexico. License holder, number one, Little Toad Creek Brewery and Distillery, doing business as Little Toad Creek Distillery. Liquor license number six three zero zero four, uh, one one two two, Highway thirty-five, Members, New Mexico, eight eight zero four nine. And number two, Little Toad Creek Brewery, doing business as Little Toad Creek Brewery. Liquor license number six seven zero two one, one one two two, Highway thirty-five, Members, New Mexico, eight eight zero four nine. If anybody wants to present?
My name is Carrie Lemon. I'm the interim director of the Alumni Affairs, and I sit on the committee at the university, Western New Mexico University, for the In Your Community, Community Planning Committee. And so Bash on Broadway is one of the events, um, part of that program. And of course, the initiative is to help bridge the community and Silver City and introduce our students to the community because it's kind of a kickoff for the new school year. And so this year, with the, um, construction and the traffic on Broadway, um, we're proposing to have it on Bullard and fencing off the area in front of the Little Toad, um, and having live music, and President Shepard will give an address, um, right before the event starts, and it's open to the community as well as, um, welcoming our students to a brand-new school year. Any questions?
Uh, Councilor Madison?
Yeah, I do. Um, as, um, the mayor, um, read, it's, um, five to nine PM, that's what the letter requested. The material that was, uh, submitted by Little Toad was five to ten PM, and then the map said five to eleven PM. So is there, um, something in there, uh, that we can agree on as the time?
I think that's a great question. Um, yes, there was, there's been some adjustments to, for example, the, um, the event outside, the music and stuff actually doesn't start until six thirty. The reason the request was for five was for setup. So, um, the same thing on the, on the other end of that. Initially, we requested until nine and realizing, um, that really didn't give a whole lot of time, um, for the amount of effort that's put in for setup and the music and stuff. And so then there was the adjustment made for ten o'clock, and then, I'm, I'm not familiar with the eleven o'clock because I didn't, I didn't fill that piece out.
No, that was just on the, on the map.
Oh, okay.
The, the ten PM end time, five to ten PM, is on the request that Little Toad has to fill out for the liquor. That's, so I'm assuming that that's the time.
I believe...
Presuming that that's the time.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And then, um, I just want to, I know that everyone, um, all of our staff and, uh, the chief and everyone has approved this, but I just wanted to address that concern I have. Um, and it once again goes to something that I'm on record as stating in a council meeting that I didn't really want to have anything right there on the corner during, during, um, the period that Highway ninety is closed, the bridge is closed. And so, um, I understand that, like I said, that the chief and everyone has agreed to it. So I'm going to ask that somehow, working with the town, that there be signs placed, um, at, um, the turn from, um, Highway Hudson onto Broadway, and then coming down Broadway, that Bullard is closed. Because I am so afraid of the worst-case scenario where we have someone who's not, doesn't even know what they're doing and they don't really realize it, and how many times have we heard about cars turning in and plowing into a festival? And that, that is, the only reason why this concern exists is because ninety, the bridge is closed. And that's the same sort of concern I brought forward before is because of the way I, you know, I just, I'm concerned about safety, I know the chief is too, but I always look at, can we prepare for the worst-case scenario? So I would like to ask that, that you work with the town to, and, and with the, the police department for proper signage, trying to abate any potential. Doesn't mean it may not happen, I mean, there's other things you can do, but I'm just thinking, anything we can do to signify that there's a road closure, you can't turn left.
Being taught, the nurses reacted.
Well, it may be that we, we close down the left-hand turn lane that goes left onto Bullard.
Yes, we, we can close the left-hand turn lane.
On, on South Broadway.
Okay.
Mayor of City Council, we always do.
Okay.
We always make sure that the traffic cannot pull into that left turn lane. Uh, likewise, we have big sign posting to, uh, show road closed.
Okay, great.
So it can't be missed by anybody. So we take the precautions on it.
Great, thank you. I appreciate it.
And we will do anything extra that necessary to, to help make sure that, uh, it's as safe as possible.
Yeah, I just, that's, uh, apparently I'm the one that worries about this stuff all the time. Yes, I, I do. I, I mean, I, I just don't want anything to happen to anyone, um, including, you know, everyone in town that may be going and the students, my students and their parents and things like that.
Yeah.
I want us all to be safe and to have a really great celebration anywhere along the line, whatever it is we're doing.
Yeah, valid.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I would suggest that we do make sure when we, uh, if there's a motion, that we change the time to ten PM in the motion. And with that being said, I'll entertain a motion. Councilor Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve of two public celebration permit applications for Western New Mexico University Bash on Broadway event to be held on August fifteenth, two thousand and fifteen, from five PM to ten PM at two hundred North Bullard Street, Silver City, New Mexico. License holder, number one, Little Toad Creek Brewery and Distillery, doing business as Little Toad Creek Distillery. Liquor license, number six three zero zero four, eleven twenty-two, Highway thirty-five, Members, New Mexico, eight eight oh four nine. And number two, Little Toad Creek, Little Toad Creek Brewery, doing business, Little Toad Creek Brewery, liquor license, number six seven zero two one, eleven twenty-two, Highway thirty-five, Members, New Mexico, eight eight oh four nine.
Councilor?
Yeah, I'll second that motion that's read.
We have a motion, a second, that is read into the record. Is there any further discussion? We have a motion, second, is read into the record. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Anyone need to break? We're good? Okay. Next item on the agenda is approval disapproval of two public celebration permit applications for the Members Region Arts Council Seventh Annual Pickamania Festival to be held September twelfth and thirteenth, two thousand and fifteen, at the twelve-hundred block of North Pope Street, Silver City, New Mexico. License holder, number one, Little Toad Creek Brewery and Distillery, doing business as Little Toad Creek Distillery. Liquor license, number six three zero zero four, at eleven twenty-two, Highway thirty-five, Members, New Mexico, eight eight zero four nine. And number two, Little Toad Creek Brewery, doing business as Little Toad Creek Brewery. Liquor license, number six seven zero two one, eleven twenty-two, Highway thirty-five, Members, New Mexico, eight eight zero four nine. Okay?
Good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm here representing the Members Region Arts Council, and I know you all have a letter showing that Pickamania will be held from September eleventh through the thirteenth, two thousand and fifteen. Um, and we are here this evening seeking a, um, a permit for the Beer Garden, uh, that will take place in Pope Street, um, just adjacent to Golf Park on the Saturday and Sunday of the event. The Friday night kickoff dance is actually, does not include any alcohol, and that's going to be taking place downtown in front of the, um, and it does not involve Bullard either. It's going to be, um, outside the Silver City Food Co-op Annex where the new cafe is there, and then down the Stub Street toward the Farmers Market Plaza. Yeah, as in past years. So, um, I know that you have the information from Little Toad Creek, and do you have any questions for us?
Councilor Madison?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just have a simple question. The map appears that the street closure goes into the middle of the intersection?
Which intersection?
Um, intersection of Twelfth and Pope.
Well, we always close off all the streets surrounding the park, so it goes through the intersection completely around the park. Uh, the street closures for the event.
Right. I mean, I guess in, in past years, I remember being able to turn, uh, left in front of the, not in front of, not on Pope, but on Twelfth. So the question is, so it goes all the way through the intersection or, or just halfway through? It just shows halfway through on this.
Can I come look at your map?
Yes, yeah. Okay. So typically, uh, northbound or westbound, I'm not sure, or eastbound, Pope, I mean, I don't know which way it's going. Northbound is the way it goes for me. You can turn generally on Twelfth going west, you can't turn east.
Yes, twelfth street traffic will be able to turn right on Pope Street there.
So the, ideally, the street closure ends at the sidewalk like it has done in past years?
That's correct.
Okay, is it, right, the map that we have shows it going into the intersection?
Yes, and I think that, I think perhaps, uh, because I'm only there a few hours a week now, I think someone sent that map in, and I'm not sure, I think they just tried to figure it out. I guess it's a little bit off.
Well, just, I, I mean, I think it's fine, but I, I mean, I know that you're no longer there, so...
Most of the time.
So I, I think, um, if we can just, uh, make sure that, that we try to...
Do you want me to send in a new map?
I don't think that's necessary.
Okay.
I mean, I think just so that, I was just trying to get some clarification.
Okay.
Okay, great, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion. Councilor Kano?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to approve of two public celebration permit applications for the Membres Region, Region Arts Council's Seventh Annual Pickamania Festival to be held September 12th and 13th, 2015, at the 1200th block of North Pope Street, Silver City, New Mexico. License holder number one, Little Toad Creek Brewery and Distillery, doing business as Little Toad Creek Distillery. Liquor license number 63004, 1122, what, Highway 35, Membres, New Mexico, 88049. And number two, Little Toad Creek Brewery, doing business as Little, Little Toad Creek Brewery. Liquor license number 67021, 1122, Ho, Highway 35, Membres, New Mexico, 88049.
Counsel Ray?
I'll second it, Mr. Ray.
We have a motion, a second, is read into the record. Is there any further discussion? We have a motion, second, is read into the record. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Very much.
Next item on the agenda is approval/disapproval of Resolution Number 2015-21, Final Quarter Financial Report, year ending June 30th, 2015. Mr. Brown?
Mr. Brown, uh, what you have in front of you is the fourth quarter of the report that is required to be approved by the town council. This basically sets the beginning cash balance, unaddicted beginning cash balances for, uh, next year's beginning budget. Um, the, really, the only things that are different from what I projected is, uh, if you look at lodgers tax, lodgers tax had a, and basically, it's lodgers tax promotional, which is what we pay out. I had a negative $26,000 cash balance, and that was due to, um, carryovers from paying some of 2014's lodgers tax in 2015, plus all of 2015. And in next year's budget, I did adjust and decrease some of my discretionary funding in lodgers tax, so that we would can maintain the $200,000 that you've already awarded. Uh, and then we will increase the, I did increase the transfer to lodger tax promotional by the $26,000 to cover that, to zero it out at the beginning of the year. Um, the water sewer fund did, uh, end up with a negative $51,000 balance, but, uh, the receivables was over $360,000. Uh, this is the very busy time of year. Uh, we had to make transfers out to cover a lot of the debt service. Most of our debt service is due in June, so it's a, it's a really tight time of the year. So, uh, that's when, uh, just, just for your information, uh, the debt service for the meters and the refinancing of the, of the, uh, the water sewer loan that we're looking at doing, I'm trying to make the principal payment during December to split up that, so the cash flow isn't, we don't have a crash, cash flow issue. Um, so basically, those are the only two areas that I wanted to show that there was some, some, something different than what I expected. But they're not anything major.
Counsel Amy Smith?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 2015-21, Final Quarter Financial Report, year ending June 30th, 2015.
Counsel Edison?
Mr. Mayor, um, I second the motion as stated.
We have a motion, second, for approval of Resolution Number 2015-21, Final Quarter Financial Report, year ending June 30th, 2015. Is there any further discussion? We have a motion, second, as read into the record. Roll call.
Counsel Carter?
Aye.
Counsel Ray?
Aye.
Counselor Amensman?
Aye.
Counsel Edison?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is approval/disapproval of Resolution Number 2015-22, a resolution amending the approved and adopted budget for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2014, through June 30th, 2015, and for municipal purpose in the town of Silver City, New Mexico, transferring and appropriating funds thereof. Mr. Brown?
Mayor, counsel, uh, the, this is the final budget adjustment for fiscal year 2015. So, what we've done here is we've, uh, on page one, increased revenues or adjusted revenues to their actuals. Uh, page two, we adjusted transfers to cover transfers, uh, to new grants or, uh, decreased transfers from one place to another because they were needed in a, in a different place. For instance, uh, you'll see the, there was a transfer that was going to, from general to street, the street fund. Um, we didn't do that because what we did is we covered, uh, a couple of grants that would have been, instead of transferring the money to the streets and then turning it around, transferring them from streets to the grant, we just didn't do that transfer and just did them directly to the grants. Uh, so it's just an easier way of bookkeeping and, and tracking it. Uh, the final page is increasing expenditures. What that did was increased expenditures to what was actual, as well as added all of the new grants, so that we were authorized, even though we spent them, and you authorized a lot of the grants, uh, through the award of, of, of the projects throughout the year. Um, we, we did the final budget adjustment to authorize the final spending of those funds on the final page. Now, do you have any questions?
Any questions? Counsel Edison?
Mr. Mayor, there's a comment. It's nice to see that we've done even the $1, uh, transfers after we, after that was pulled out, it wasn't a couple of years ago. So, I'm glad that we're making sure even down to the dollar that we're moving, um, money appropriately and so that we won't get, uh, a comment from the AG's office about that.
Yeah, the state auditor's office, not the AG.
That's right, I'm sorry, state auditor's. My, my, yeah, we never do that. No, I'm sorry, the state auditor's office. So, then, I'm pleased to see that. Thank you.
Any other questions? Any kind of motion? Counsel Amy Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Resolution Number 2015-22, a resolution amending the approved and adopted budget for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2014, through June 30th, 2015, and for municipal purpose in the town of Silver City, New Mexico, transferring and appropriating funds thereof.
Counsel Edison?
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion as stated.
We have a motion, second, as read into the record. Is there any further discussion? We have a motion, second, as read into the record. Roll call.
Counsel Carter?
Aye.
Counsel Ray?
Aye.
Counsel Amensman?
Aye.
Counsel Edison?
Aye.
Motion carries. And as if that wasn't enough, the next item on the agenda, approval/disapproval of Resolution Number 2015-23, approval and adoption of the budget for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2015, through June 30th, 2016. Mr. Brown?
Uh, Mayor, counsel, this is basically the budget that we presented to you at the end of July. Uh, the only changes to this budget is what I talked about, uh, we had the, uh, as far as lodgers tax and water sewer fund, uh, we decreased the expenditures, like I said, uh, in the lodgers tax and increased transfers to lodgers tax promotional. In the water sewer fund, we decreased some of the capital expenditures, uh, that we had budgeted originally to offset that negative balance, so that we could, um, uh, make the beginning cash, add the 112 reserve. And that's the one thing about the water sewer, when we keep, we budget a 112 cash reserve, so we've got approximately $300,000 to use throughout the year, extra, or whether we realize it on the revenue side, or if it is realized, then we can spend it on projects that we usually do throughout the year. Um, uh, so with that, um, all we did, other than that, was add, uh, additional grant projects that we've, uh, been authorized, um, that we probably didn't, that were authorized prior to our, our last meeting, but we just didn't have the time to get it included in the last budget. It is included now. And what we, what we have, everything up to, to yesterday that has been approved for us, it's included in this budget.
Any questions, Mr. Brown? Counsel Amy Smith?
Mr. Ray, thank you. I move to approve Resolution Number 2015-23, approval and adoption of the budget for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2015, through June 30th, 2016.
Counsel Edison?
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion as stated.
We have a motion, second, for approval of Resolution Number 2015-23, approval and adoption of the budget for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2015, through June 30th, 2016. Is there any further discussion? We have a motion, second, as read into the record. Roll call.
Counsel Carter?
Aye.
Counsel Ray?
Aye.
Counsel Amensman?
Aye.
Counsel Edison?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I, I would just like to, um, commend the finance staff for all their hard work on the budget. Um, they did, they've done a tremendous job, uh, specifically Anita. Um, you know, a lot of work, working on this, uh, meter project, um, over the last three weeks of, between Anita and the rest of the staff, they've been working weekends and late at night, trying to both get this budget and everything, and the information for the ratings and the meter, they're all coming together at the same time. So, they've done a really good job, and they've put a lot of hard work into this. Uh, we've taken advantage of Linda's last days, getting the additional information that we need for the meter project, so, you know, and I just want to add, she is gonna be sort of, she, she was there when I first started, and, and she's gonna be sorely messed, uh, with the town. So, I just wanted to add that before.
No, I appreciate you adding that, 'cause, uh, things, the work that the finance department's been doing over the last decade has been at such a high level, we tend to take it for granted. Our expectations are, is this good job, and, and, uh, we don't want to underappreciate them. So, so thanks for reminding that and then pass on, uh, our appreciation of, of everything they do, and, uh, getting us their clean audits and getting us these good budgets and everything that, everything they do day in, day out. Uh, Counsel Edison?
Mr. Mayor, I move for a short recess.
Counsel Amy Smith?
Mr. Mayor, I second that.
We have a motion, second, for a short recess. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are in recess. Call is meeting back to order. Next item on the agenda is approval/disapproval of Notice of Intent Ordinance Number 1241, an ordinance amending Chapter 6, Animals, Section 6-187, Animals Running at Large, and Section 6-190, Failure to Provide Proper Care and Maintenance of the Municipal Code of the Town of Silver City. Counsel Cynthia Edison is the sponsor, and I'll let her open. Counsel?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, after working with, uh, the animal advocates of Grant County and a number of other folks, um, that are actually here, present in the room, and I appreciate it, that, um, you know, even some folks that live in my district that are here, and I really appreciate them being here. Um, over the years, I, I have, uh, sponsored things that have to do with the animal ordinance, but this one, um, really became, um, something pressing for me, um, and it's something I mentioned when I was running for reelection, is, uh, the single-point tethering of animals, um, and that I wanted, uh, us to, um, find a way to, um, stop basically what's called, also called the chaining of animals. So, this, uh, ordinance, which is, um, thanks to, um, uh, our esteemed attorney, um, Robert Scavran, is fairly well-written with one exception. Uh, there's a little error, and I'll mention that. But this, uh, basically sets the, the parameters for what we expect within the town of Silver City. Um, and under, uh, Animals Running at Large, we really, uh, would like folks to be able to, um, I've seen a lot of call for making sure that the leash laws are enforced. People have a tendency to walk their dogs or to let their dogs and their animals run loose, and it discusses that. Um, it also states, um, what I call single-point tethering, but we, um, call it prohibited tethering. It does leave, um, sufficient room for, um, our animal control officer and our police department to be able to, um, on a visual basis, realize that if there is a cable or chain that's being used, it can't exceed the eighth of the dog's body weight. I mean, so it sets standards, standards, um, that we, um, really do not want to have, which is, um, the chaining, staking, or tethering of any animal in a cruel and inhumane, uh, manner. One of the options that was placed in this ordinance and is certainly, as the rest of this NOI is up for discussion, is, um, that there can be a tie-out, but the trolley system is very specifically indicated. And the reason why I felt it was important to place the trolley system option in here is that, um, many, uh, properties in our town don't have enough space necessarily for, uh, or their landlords don't want them to fence the yard. And we have to provide something for those animals so that they're not chained. And so, it is an option, and it is something that can be discussed. I think, for me, the most important thing is we don't have an animal out on a chain, even though it has food and water and, uh, shelter, that we don't have the animal constantly chained. And so, that's why, uh, it's, the section on the adequate care requirements and specifications, it's a roadmap of what we, of our expectations in the town. It's probably the hardest part for our animal control officer or anyone to actually make sure it's being done, especially making sure that it's being done within someone's home that you don't necessarily see into. But provides them with parameters so that if they are entering a home for another reason, domestic violence, they also see that the dog is not being well cared for, it doesn't have adequate food and water, that there's feces, it just provides our officers and our, uh, animal control officer with another avenue to, um, make sure that everyone in the residence, including the people and the animals, are being, are not in a, in a, in a bad situation. Uh, I think that there's a couple of things that I took out, and I want to explain that real briefly, and a couple of things that I wanted to make sure was in here. I, um, specifically removed, um, what's it called? Invisible fencing. Because, um, invisible fencing is by definition, an electric fence. And, uh, veterinarians have talked about how it's really, it's not a positive reinforcement, it's a negative reinforcement. A good animal, um, a well, uh, you know, a very nice animal can turn into an aggressive animal, especially if, here's this invisible fence, they have a shock collar on them, they're running to see, you know, even their owner coming home, and they get shocked by it. That is what, that actually is, is fairly cruel. Um, I know from experience, having, um, a sibling that, that used an invisible fence, she finally turned it off because the height of the, of the shock has to be so much as to make an animal stop and not cross that invisible fence. And so, she just started not turning on the fence, keeping it turned off, and so, uh, the dog did wander off. The other thing, too, about invisible fences is, they don't necessarily stop an animal that really wants to, to protect someone or to get to something. So, um, that is one thing that I withdrew from, that proposed, um, uh, in discussions with our attorney, that I withdrew from this proposed NOI, it's not in here. I added, um, under prohibited tethering or restraint, if you want to call it, is, um, caging or crating. We don't want to see on the outside of a house, which I witnessed as well, um, over all the years, um, living in different parts of the country, an animal that's confined to a cage, a crate, or a kennel such that they cannot move. They cannot stand up, they can't walk around, they can't at least have enough space to, to make sure that their food and water is in one location, and if, uh, they're having to use, um, to go to the bathroom, that they can do that far enough away from their food and water. So, it sets that up as well. And then the last thing that I added, um, before I get to an error and a, something else that we're gonna talk about, is abandonment. Um, and this abandonment is under the adequate care requirements and specifications. An abandonment is really gonna require a member of the community who sees an animal abandoned for, by its owner, for more than a 24-hour period without a substitute garden or- abandoned for, by its owner, for more than a 24-hour period without a substitute gardener, guardian, or keeper having care of the animal, they're going to have to stand up and say, no one has visited, no one's in the house, the house is up for sale, no one's returned to take care of the animal, no one's returned to, or there's no one, even if they're gone for a period of time, there's no one visiting the animal, making sure that it's got fresh food and water, and adequate shelter. So it's really going to be like most of our laws, in ordinances across the US, someone will have to stand up and say, I witnessed this, I need, and I'm willing to go to a court of law to say that I witnessed this. So I just wanted to make sure that folks understood that there's some constraints for our animal control officer, but there's guidelines in here that will, will set the standard of care. Now, in terms of the standard of care, there is one issue under E, under medical and veterinary care. We mistakenly, no one caught it until one of the folks from the animal advocates of Grant County did, there's human vaccines in there. And it's really supposed to be just temporary parvovirus and adenovirus for animals. And I want to make it clear that we did not, we have not taken out the rabies section in the current animal ordinance, that's for the protection of the public. These three vaccines, these three-in-one, that's for the protection of the animal, that's for the adequate care of the animal. So there's a set expectation that we'll know that, you know, that if requested, that you can produce that information, because the licenses that you get is for rabies, because that's what the animal wears, so that it's protection for humans and the community. So I wanted to make that clear as well. And then there's been some discussion, some comments regarding the lack of a more specific description of adequate shelter. And accordingly, in the final version of the NOI, together with the town attorney, we will come up with a more detailed description of how animals shall be adequately protected from the elements. So I welcome any comments, but we're going to work together to do that. So it's, it's not a material change, it's just more of a, just providing a more specific description under that, that section. So I just want to make sure that you all know that. I think the last thing that I would like to mention on this is, I asked our attorney to put one word in consistently throughout the document, and that is "fresh" in front of "food and water." And that's because you can't have water that's been outside that's frozen, or food that's been outside subject to the elephant, elements, not elephants, elements, and insects, and have it frozen if it's during the winter. That's not fresh food. If there's insects in it, it's not fresh food. Same with water, if the water's not clean. So I did that to provide the ability for our animal control officer to ensure compliance, because it gives specificity to exactly what we expect, fresh food, fresh water. So I know that was kind of roundabout, but I wanted to make sure that I got everything that I felt that was really critical in here, and I will be, when I, after discussion and presentation from the folks and, from folks on the council about any concerns that they might have, I'm going to be asking for a 30-day consideration beyond the 15 days, so hopefully at the end of August, we'll revisit this and ask for folks that if you don't speak today about any concerns you might have, or issues you would like to, in this particular portion of the ordinance that we're looking at, which is really kind of generally called animal care, please make sure that you contact your counselor or the council town clerk so that your input can be heard. And really, I personally would like to hear what all of the issues might be about this. I can tell you that the chief is here, I had a meeting with the chief and with our animal control officer, Sherwood, yes, and I would say that I'd be happy if I could, before we go to council, to have the chief make any comments that he has in support of this, because we had a good meeting about this. So thank you.
Mayor, City Council, at face value, we have no issue with the, the document as presented. In the discussion with Counselor Beddison, there are specific areas that will probably be more difficult than others to enforce. However, first and foremost, what we will try and do is gain compliance through education, or do an education period to ensure that people know what their responsibility is on the subject. So it's, it's a good document, we feel it's a viable document, and it's enforceable for the most part. Having said that, some of the areas that are concerned that may be more guidelines than enforcement is the area of the, in the back for care and requirements and specification. Some of those are going to be a little bit difficult, as Counselor Beddison mentioned, without help from the public to be able to identify those issues. So on some of these, under that section, we will definitely have to have help from the public to ensure compliance.
Thank you. You know, I'll, do you have anything else? We'll start with going to the public on some of their comments, and then I'll give it to the council. And I'll start with those who actually, who did sign up at the beginning of the meeting. First is Ms. North.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council, and thank you, Counselor Beddison, for sponsoring this. I just have a few comments, because I have seen too many dogs in this town that have been tied up and without adequate housing. Dogs are companion animals. They are meant to be with their people. They're not meant to be indefinitely tied up to anything. Even if someone wants to keep a dog for security or a guard dog, the logical place is in the house, not outside, when dogs are tied out so much and they bark at everything, you can't tell if they're barking at a burglar or whatever. And one other comment is, I'm wondering if the city or somebody else, some other group, could pursue grant money to help out homeowners who would like to fence in their properties to keep their dogs, you know, running in their yards, and they can't afford to do that. Because I know there's definitely people in this town that would help them to put up fencing, but it's a, you know, it's kind of a money issue, and I know Duniana County is now pursuing this, and Bernalillo has pursued this with apparently some really good success. So thank you.
Hi, my name is Candace Brainley. I'm a concerned citizen as well as president of SNAP, the Spain Neuter Awareness Program, here in Grant, Canton, and Hidalgo County. Thank you, Ms. Beddison, for doing this. It's long overdue. My, I don't understand why people have dogs and just put them out in their yards and leave them. In the last couple of months, I've seen three different dogs, I've called dispatch on them, and my concern is the adequate shelter. All three times I was told, well, they have shelter. One had a swamp cooler cover as shelter, one had a three-sided plywood box open to the elements that freaked snowstorm we had early spring, it was just wide open and the snow was going in, and the other one has a doghouse, but it has no shingles or tar paper on the top, so the center seam is open and the rain just comes in. So I realize we only have one dog catcher, and that this is a huge problem in this town, but, and I'm also told that the current guidelines just say adequate shelter, and I'm seeing adequate shelter here, so I would like to address that issue. So I sat down today and thought, what would appropriate shelter be? It should have a floor to keep the animal off the wet and cold ground and keep their bedding dry. It should be the appropriate size for the animal. I've seen animals that, they get as a puppy, they get a little house, the animal grows, the house doesn't. Bedding or some form of carpet or something should be provided. It should be waterproof, weatherproof. It should be insulated, and it should have enough of an overhang that it keeps rain, snow, and the sun out. That said, I decided to look what other, at what other towns were doing, and Las Cruces has all these wonderful little PDF folders that you can print, and I printed two of them, and I will leave them with you. And it says, "Shelter must be waterproof, at least three sides and a roof, and large enough for your pet to be comfortable. Must be shaded and clean, and remember that this is your pet's home." And it addresses food, water, health care. There is another one on tethering requirements, and it expresses actually in Duniana or in Las Cruces proper, an animal is only allowed to be point tethered for no more than two hours in any 12-hour period, and not tethered on a running line or pulley trolley system for more than four hours in a 12-hour period. And all these other specs are here. Then I went to Albuquerque, and it was a 65-page document in legalese, and I didn't feel like printing that out, but one of the employees at the pet health shop is a former animal control officer from Albuquerque, and I talked to her, and she said that shelter must be insulated and waterproof in Albuquerque. Also, they only allow point chaining for one hour per day. Nothing can be in the way of the dog's run or line when they are on this tether. I've seen too many dogs that are hung up on things and can't get to what shelter they These towns, I mean, I don't see why we need to reinvent the wheel, other jurisdictions have already taken this under advisement, and I would like you to really specifically pinpoint what shelter, water, I've seen too many five-gallon buckets out there that the dogs can't reach the water in the bottom of the bucket, or the bucket gets tipped over, or the water's been in there so long it's not fit for anybody's consumption. And so that concerns me. Well, I've got a five-gallon bucket of water out there, but it's not, you know, usable for the dog, or it's empty. I appreciate that we're addressing this issue, and I hope that we can be specific enough that the ordinance will have teeth, that when the animal control or police officers go to a place where a complaint has been made, that they are able to do something about the situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Also on the list was Ms. Maron.
Okay, well, good evening all, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and city government. I hardly know what else to add. People have really covered a lot of our concerns. So I'm a member of the animal advocates of Grant County, and there are others with me who have worked in this group. We are a citizens' group that has been meeting for over a year to help amend this current animal ordinance, and we've been working with Cynthia Beddison toward that goal. The focus of our work has been to promote a ban on the practice of persistent single-point chaining or tethering of dogs, denounced as, a lot of people know now, that, you know, by animal welfare organizations such as the Humane Society of the United States and the Tethering and single-point chaining is often accompanied by the kinds of neglect that have been brought up here tonight, the lack of potable drinking water, old, old food that isn't acceptable to the animal. But on behalf of the animal advocates, I wish to thank Counselor Beddison for her work in offering this updated ordinance, which addresses this cruelty and accompanying neglect. Silver City has now joined at least four other New Mexico towns, which have done likewise. And indeed, our town is part of a nationwide movement to address these issues. In the words of many respondents of the survey circulated by animal advocates to help determine public support for this ban on single-point tethering, it is long overdue. So thank you again, Counselor Beddison. Major concerns consistently emerged during our work with the community this year, and particularly during distribution and analysis of the survey. One is the challenge of educating dog owners of the need for change, and enforcement in general by our ACO and the courts. Given that our town has just one ACO, any change in the law must be specific enough for him to address deficiencies by dog owners, and the court needs to provide direction and alternatives to offenders of the ordinance. One sad example of the failure of the current ordinance is our ACO's inability to cite the owners of two chained dogs on Kelly Street, whose "shelter," in quotes, consisted of a camper cap and a hood, a car hood. And this was in the dead of winter with rain and snow in November. Thus, the word "adequate" used to describe appropriate shelter in the current ordinance must be much more clearly defined, and that's been addressed by several people tonight. Given that dog owners sometimes lack the financial means to adequately fence their animal, animal advocates have begun to do some fundraising to help them do so, and the idea of attaining grants is a really good one. We have learned that some solutions to lack of fencing are actually relatively simple to address. Substitutions for fencing, such as too small an enclosure, or a trolley system which fails to conform to the specifications in the proposed ordinance, will not be an improvement over the existing ordinance. In fact, it can be worse. If the, if the trolley system is not done properly, it's a disaster for the animal. So the animal advocates propose that citizens be given a period of time in which to implement the changes of the new law, and during this time, the animal advocates will be available to work with community members in an educational capacity, an approach which has been successful in other towns, in Mexican towns, especially Bernalillo. So thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Now I did want to start with those three ladies, because they were on our public input sign-in sheet, but I will open it up to any other members of the public who do want to speak on this, this subject or ordinance.
Hi, my name's April Lee. I'm a town member, and I'd just like to thank Councilwoman Beddison, because I've called her a lot about dogs in my neighborhood in Silver Heights. And I would just really like to reiterate what everyone who spoke before me said, and I just, I would like it to feel as a community member more like everyone's working together as a team, instead of feeling like, up to this point, as a community member, I mean, I could call Cynthia, but her hands were tied legally, she couldn't do anything. And there are a lot of dogs in my, I mean, I don't live in an uber affluent neighborhood, but it's relatively affluent, and it's kind of shocking how many neglected animals there are in my neighborhood. So I'm really thankful for the fact that we now have the law on our side in terms of addressing this issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Another thing I just want to bring up is love and attention. It breaks my heart. I see it every day. I have a friend that lives over in Gordon, and this poor female pit bull, her heart is just broken. She's left outside all day, and it breaks my heart. I see it many, in many yards. You know, they may have food, they may have shelter, they may have water, but they don't have any love and any attention. I was telling these ladies earlier, oh, aren't they a cute puppy? They're so cute, let's get the puppy. And after about a month or so, they've lost interest, don't want to take care of them, and it breaks my heart for the animals, that they're left alone, they don't get any love, they're not petted. And many times I've walked by big dogs, and they're barking and barking, and I just start speaking, "How are you? You okay?" And the dog, the tail will just be wagging, and they're just so thankful and grateful that someone showed them attention.
Thank you. Any council comments or questions? Counselor Amundson? Councilor Ms. Maron.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm heartened by the cooperation between citizens and the council. That's really wonderful. I do have some questions about process, and I don't exactly know to whom to address these. Let me guess, maybe. But one of the things, you know, that you said was that education of the population would be really important, and the group, a group member spoke and said that the group would be interested in working in education. I'm just really curious, what medium and what kind of processes of education might be planned to address the variety of owners who are out there? I know, you know, publishing, something in the newspaper gets some attention, having workshops gets some attention, but I've failed miserably getting the attention of some of the people who are chaining dogs in my neighborhood. And so I'm just really curious if the you chief, or you Councilor Edison, or you citizen advocates have an idea of particularly effective education.
Councilor Edison?
I know that the chief and, and he's mentioned, he mentioned it earlier, the chief and our ACO, when we met, talked about the educational period, not necessarily citing folks right away, but if there's a call in, that they're informed about the new ordinance, they're given the opportunity to take corrective action, you know, return within a, whatever the determined amount of time is, and to see if, you know, there has been corrective action taken. Additionally, sometimes corrective action can be taken and then lapses, and that's where the public comes into making sure. I would, I mean, I haven't looked at these yet, but another tactic is to be able to have downloadable brochures on our website, and not just for this, but for some of our other sorts of things that we do. And that might be also another way to be able to have them available for download, and then have some at City Hall that are already printed, and maybe distribute them in several other areas. I think it's going to be a multifaceted, multi-primed effort in, with joining with citizens and with the animal advocates group, with even our shelter, with working with our municipal judge, and then, of course, with the chief and our ACO and officers.
When an officer responds to it, or the animal control officer responds to it, I think pamphlets are a great idea. Those individuals will receive a pamphlet during that period of time and will ensure that there's appropriate follow-up on that case to ensure that they're complying. So we have a couple of processes that we'll have to change within our department, and be able to list those issue houses that we've already visited, provided information, and then go back and revisit to ensure that they've complied with the ordinance. So we have a multi-leveled system. Not only do we need to, as Councilor Edison mentioned, apologize, we need to also do all the medias that we require, town website, we can have pamphlets at the police department, we can have pamphlets at any of the city-owned properties. The more we get it out there, the better we are. And again, a three- to six-month period of adjustment will probably be needed before we start seeing people getting cited in court. There will be exceptions, always. If there's non-compliance and it's severe enough, we'll take action immediately.
Councilor, I think also putting something on cats, maybe putting together some type of video, a small educational program that maybe Councilor Edison can star in.
I'm just saying, so we have to ask some help from another council member that might not just start sobbing about it.
Do that as well.
And I would also suggest PSAs on the radio. If this passes, that there be a series of PSAs that we develop with the police department ACO, so that it can be on the radio, just saying that the ordinance has changed, this is what we're moving towards, more information is available here, and just little vignettes of what the ordinance really kind of lays out, I think, would be, everything that we can use to educate the public is going to be a good thing. Did you have something?
Yeah, if I may. In the existing ordinance, not what's coming up for discussion now, Section 655, Administrative Enforcement, it means the desire that enforcement shall first attempt to gain compliance through cooperative effort. The animal control officers shall, upon determination of a violation of this chapter, and that emergency or exigent circumstances do not exist, it's not an emergency, right, but there's a violation, such as harm or danger to personal property, may the administrative officer may, uh, may issue a notice of violation and order to take corrective action. Such notice and order may be hand-delivered or delivered by certified mail. Such notice and order shall specify the provision or provisions of this chapter alleged to have been violated, along with a short and plain statement of the facts that constitute the violation. The notice shall include an order to take corrective action, requiring compliance within a reasonable time, as stated in the order. So there already is a provision for animal control to work with people who have been cited for violations. Now, the idea of holding back enforcement so that people can be educated en masse, I think, is less effective. I mean, of course, that should be done in addition to, but if there's violations occurring, the idea that, oh, well, you give me six months to come around and figure out how to give my dog fresh water and fresh food, that seems a bit unreasonable. The whole premise of this animal control ordinance that I've been involved with for the last almost 15 years has been try to educate the public, try to work with individuals who own animals where there are violations, and give them a reasonable amount of time to come into compliance. This, the present law, I think, is dealing with people that don't really, are not amenable to being educated, people that are too busy to care, or people that you can't teach anything to. So the present provision, which will include whatever ordinances you decide to adopt in this next month period, it is already built in that there is an opportunity for the, first of all, you're going to have education. People know that it's not a good idea to leave your dog strung out in the rain. To be given another break of several months because they have to figure out, oh, the dog does get wet, what do you know? It's kind of anti-logic. So what I'm suggesting is that we, that when this particular provision, 655, Administrative Enforcement, which was always the theme of this town, trying to work with persons, maybe they're not educated the first time, but when you go to their house and you see the dog being strung up on a fence with a heavy chain, and you say your dog is left out in the rain and the chain's too heavy, I'll give you 10 days to get a lighter chain, and they still don't comply. Six more months of education is not going to help those people.
I believe that that's the intent. What you're saying is the intent. It may not have been articulated that way. We are, that is going to be part of the educational system.
But that's not obviating this, that the animal control officer will still issue this notice to do corrective action, and if the corrective action is not taken, that person will be cited and have to appear in municipal court with all the expenses. And I support the chief fully in what he's going to do and what Sherwood's been doing. Trying to work with people.
That is articulated much better, and that was, I believe that was the intent of what the chief was trying to mention.
The document that I quoted out of Albuquerque was dated 1994, and they are governed by the Hart Ordinance, where domestic animals cease to be chattel. They are actually treated as living beings with rights of their own, that they, it is their right to be treated humanely. What kind of ordinance do we have? Do we have, I mean, are animals, are domestic animals in this county or in this town considered property? Because up in Albuquerque, they're not. The Hart Ordinance that governs how they treat domestic animals, and Albuquerque has eliminated the chattel thing, and that domestic beings are living beings with rights of their own.
The overwhelming body of law nationwide is that animals are property. They do not have any independent rights of their own. They've used that law to ban animals from town, pets entirely. It would be within the purview of any town council to say, "No dogs in this town." Now, none of them would be re-elected, but that is the law, and that's into the Supreme Court. There have been serious problems with that ordinance in Albuquerque, yes, and I'm not even sure whether it's being enforced. The ramifications of the animal having rights, then you, what, do you appoint a guardian ad litem for the animal? And it's rough enough taking care of children in the system. When you start expanding and diluting what resources there are to take care of animals, I think that people still come first.
Well, and then it leads into the whole abuse of humans, starting with animals also. So that is something that, when you see these animals being abused in this way, are they doing the same for their children? I can cite a house on my street that that's probably so. So, anyway.
Well, one of the comments that Mr. Brown just made to me is that, you know, the police just can't enter a property. They can do, you can do a welfare check on humans, but not on animals without a warrant or probable cause. But if the officer is there investigating something else and happens to see an illegal conduct dealing with an animal, he will report it.
Is that even if the community members may have called about that?
Please come up to that problem, so they can ask you.
I just was asking if that also includes an issue where a member of the public has reported on the animal, because obviously, the member of the public isn't calling about it, domestic disturbance necessarily, they're calling specifically about the animal, so that would give them the right to enter the property, yes?
Well, it's a question of creating a probable cause to go to a court to get a warrant to enter the property, unless there's exigent circumstances, an emergency, the dog is screaming, the dog is in pain, the dog's dying.
That's a pretty ambiguous area when you're talking about a supposed piece of property.
Well, the police have to deal with ambiguities all the time.
I, I mean, I understand that. I just want to make sure that what we're working toward here is actually going to be legally beneficial, more so than what's already in existence.
Absolutely.
I would say, yes. And some of those, that question is very valid for this ordinance, as in any ordinance, even those governing children and people, we still have some of those ambiguities, and we start to get over those hurdles. This would still, in my estimation, be an improvement over what we have.
Intent, right? I mean, you have the law, and you have the interpretation of the intent of that law, and I'm liking to think that the intent of this ordinance would be to provide more protection rather than less. And then I would just like to make one more comment. I can already see it coming to light. I just, I know that there are enough animals in this town that people have, that they don't, maybe I have too much of an attachment to my animals, I don't know what normal is in that respect, but, I mean, I know that there are extremes, and I know that there are definitely people that view their animals in a much more extremely different way than I view mine. And my concern is that, I mean, I just want to be clear that I'm really supportive of this proposed change, but in saying that, my concern is that we already have a humane society that really doesn't deserve the name. It's, I mean, they are not a no-kill shelter, they kill a lot of animals, that already has a glut of animals in it. And my concern is that rather than go to court over being charged with something in terms of, you know, the treatment of an animal, that someone's just going to be like, ah, the hell with it, and they'll just take it to the pound, and it's going to become an issue for the pound. I can already see this happening. And the only reason I'm saying it is because I think in light of this proposed ordinance, the town council might want to consider, you know, addressing our humane society's setup in the way that it's run now, and perhaps find a way to give them more money to handle the influx of animals that they're probably going to get as a result of this influx. And I would just like to say that I want to see our humane society become an actual no-kill shelter, because at this point, it really is the antithesis of that. And that's my goal in this ordinance. This is just the first step, so.
Absolutely, and I appreciate that, the comment. Now, we do want to stick with the ordinance itself. There's always going to be byproducts, and we will find out those byproducts, and we will have to deal with those byproducts. But we also have to deal with the ordinance at hand, and make sure that we fully discuss and debate this particular item on its merits, and try to push forward something that is going to move us forward. Very quickly, I will just add, as I have the mic right now. I have, as a public member, witnessed a good decade of very ambitious attempts at redoing our, redoing the ordinance as a whole, on a comprehensive scale. And as we look at very comprehensive, very thorough, very good ordinances with very, very grand and great ideas on improving, we find ourselves hitting so many issues and hitting so many issues that affect the population as a whole, we end up getting a swell of backlash, and we have not been able to successfully push a comprehensive change. And what I have been a fan of, and mainly from a success standpoint, is if we take a decent ordinance, which what we have is a decent ordinance that clearly needs improvement, and we find those little specific improvement, areas of improvement, and we work on those improvements, what we find is people accept that small change much more readily, we do not have the backlash, and we have successful fixes to our ordinance. And that's what I, as I've read through this, I believe this is, we're taking a very specific issue. It is an improvement to what we have. It's very important. I do not anticipate a lot of backlash. This is, in many eyes, at least in my mind, this is, these are obvious changes that need to happen, and I think that I do anticipate a lot of support. And I fully support this notice of intent, and I hope the council does push this forward through the public's eye. And I just wanted to share that. Councilor Edison?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to elaborate on C5, which says, "No dog shall be tethered to a single point." I know that there's been some discussion brought up about how, you know, minimum of one hour, a minimum of two hours, and no timeframe was particularly set in here because, I mean, someone's going to have to be out there recording the animal, you know, the animal's been, you know, single-point tethered for any amount of time. So that's why, working with our town attorney, it's very specific. It says, "The only exception shall be short-term tethering of working dogs, hunting dogs, search and rescue dogs." And it specifically says that they have to be tethered in Um, and it's specifically says that they have to be tethered in the presence of the, of the owner or keeper or guardian. So that was, we already have in our animal ordinance that you can't hitch an animal, um, and animals defined as a horse, but it, I think it, it's all animals, can't be hitched to town property, like, or signposts, lampposts, things like that. It just became so problematic to sit there and determine how long an animal's been tethered, you just say they can't be tethered to a single point, with the exception of these. And I think that, for me, that was a better way of phrasing, and our ordinance therefore, um, if it goes forward, is a little bit tighter than the ones that allow two hours or, you know, I mean, I can see it now, someone with a camera, you know, okay, the dog was here, and you have to, I mean, there's a reasonable chain of evidence would have to be done to establish that, so just negate the fact that, that, just say they can't do it. And I think that, for me, um, that's probably one of the biggest areas of education that will need to be done, um, is making sure that folks know that it really isn't proper to take your animal on a trip to the store unless the animal gets to, is a service animal. Um, you know, to leave your pets at home and, and leave them in proper care when they're at home and go to the store unless it is a service animal. I think that that's sort of the thing we're kind of, the way I look at it, trying to promote is, is it, we need to think about what we expect in our society, and that's why I've kind of suggested these, um, items to our town attorney. So, that being said, I think that's about all I have to say. In the present way it is, I don't know if there's other council questions or comments, Mayor.
Um, if there's no other council comments, you know, one of the questions that was brought up, um, was about, um, articulating with more specificity, um, shelters.
And look at that.
And, uh, we can, we can look at that, we can consider that, um, but as I, as I read through this, you know, sometimes we, we can get too many specifics and it becomes problematic, it also gives opportunities for people to, um, to get by on technicalities which aren't, um, uh, which isn't our goal either. But I do like the fact that in our adequate shelter, you know, one of the key statements, bedding shall be kept clean and dry. You know, if they do not have an adequate shelter, uh, it's going to be very easy to find a, a very, uh, bedding that is not clean and dry. And, and I think that we, uh, we actually give a lot more flexibility and, and latitude to our enforcement officers to, to address those situations. Um, that's just something that was just kind of stirring through my head, because I did like the question, and I was wondering if we should be adding some specific, uh, some more specifics to that. Mr. Scarborough?
I, I agree with your sentiment. One of the problems in law is that when you start listing very specific elements, there becomes a legal implication that because you didn't include that element, it's not important. So the more specific you get, and the more comprehensive something looks, the failure of mentioning it is the, is the loophole in the law. That's where it gets to be a bit dangerous.
But you're right, in our case, uh, without listing any of those, then, then we do not have that loophole, and we can actually interpret that as a more...
I think that there may, I think that there's somewhere between that presentation and what the council or Madison mentioned, and what you've mentioned, it might be the, just the adding of a, of a phrase regarding a floor or a break against wind and rain, something like that. But it doesn't, uh, I think that you wouldn't want to go very much further than that, because then you get into that problem where the specificity implies that if it's not listed there, it doesn't count. So you, it's always a delicate balance.
Now, in my opinion, and, and please, uh, share yours, that would not be, uh, material so much to hurt this NOI at this point.
No, because the whole, the, the whole purpose of open meetings and agenda is to give people a reasonable sense of what's going to be discussed and what's the nature of the law to be passed. If we were changing this dramatically to say, but cats are not considered, or dogs with three legs are not considered, maybe that would be a problem, and we'd have to re-advertise. But all you're doing is you're defining, you're being more critical of something that's all, that the subject's already been broached. The adequate shelter is already mentioned, the nature of the adequate shelter is going to, may be expanded upon slightly, and that will not change the nature of this ordinance.
Is there any other questions or comments? Council Madison?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve notice of intent to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter six animals, section six dash one eight seven, animals running at large, and section six dash one ninety, failure to provide proper care and maintenance of the municipal code of the town of Silver City with the amendment that's in, under section six dash one nine zero E, that, uh, diphtheria, tetanus, and pertussis be removed and replaced with distemper, parvovirus, and adenovirus, is the proper, sorry, is the proper vaccinations for dogs and animals. Thank you.
Council Anderson?
Uh, second that motion as stated and amended.
We have a motion a second as read into the record, because I will not be able to say that right. Is there any further discussion? We have a motion a second as read into the record, roll call. No roll call?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, approval, disapproval of a, selection of a voting delegate and alternate to vote at the New Mexico Municipal League's annual conference. Mr. Brown?
Uh, excuse me?
Uh, I'm the, uh...
Excuse me?
Do you want me to?
Okay. Council Madison?
Uh, he's talking to me.
So, um, uh, Mayor and council members, uh, at the annual conference, um, each member municipality has an opportunity to vote, um, on, and not only the candidates, but on resolutions that are presented for the body for consideration in the, in the policy statement for the league. So, uh, it's a, it's a important task that's before us, is to determine who would be the primary delegate, I want to make sure I use the proper language, the voting delegate, and then there's an alternate. And the voting takes place on Thursday afternoon. I know that I'm attending the annual conference, uh, Council Kano is the mayor, and, uh, Council Ray, you're attending, but I didn't know if you were staying through till, uh, the meeting, which is usually late, it's after lunch on Thursday afternoon.
My, last year I, uh, I stayed in, and I was, and I was the voting delegate.
Yes, and I was, I believe the alternate.
You were the alternate.
Yes. And, and just as a reminder, I am running for, uh, to, for office, for, um, board member at large.
Um, that being said, I would suggest, uh, keeping the voting delegate and the alternate the same as last year, which was myself as the voting delegate and, and Council Madison as the alternate.
I agree with him.
Is that a question? Yeah. May I make a question?
Uh, Council Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I therefore move to, uh, have appoint, uh, Mayor Mose as the voting delegate and Council Madison as the alternate to vote at the New Mexico Municipal League's annual conference.
I'll second.
We have a motion a second as read into the record. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, that's it.
We have a motion a second as, as read into the record, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Council Madison?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adjourn.
I'll second it.
We have a motion a second to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.